Okay, we are going to get started. It's nice to be in a new location tonight. Welcome to the February Hoboken Board of Education meeting, and Happy Valentine's Day to everybody. Ms. Good, can you please read the Statement of Compliance?
This meeting is made down under formality to the public meeting act, NJSA 10, Hoboken Middle School. The proper public notice on the meeting was published in the local thing was on January 7, 2023. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believe that the meeting is in violation of the Hoboken Public Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education request that they make a statement at this time. The board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the board at a late date on C A T V channel 77 and videos channel 46. The full meeting recording will also remain available on board docs which can be accessed through the district home page. The Hoboken Board of Education is permitted to present as a forum of public process and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants find the silence their electronic devices on the course of the meeting, and if use of devices necessary, ask them to please leave the meeting room if we need to conduct personal business.
Please rise for the pleasure, ladies.
My question is to declare the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we take a roll call, please?
Ms. Pedmentori.
Here.
Mr. Delatorre.
Here.
Ms. Durban.
Here.
Ms. Connor. Mr. Quuppo.
Here.
Ms. McDermott.
Here.
Ms. Norwood.
Here.
Mr. Carrion.
Here.
Ms. Engle.
Here.
You have a call.
Okay, so first, we're going to start with the recognition portion of our meeting, and I will turn the video over to our Assistant Superintendent, and then we'll grab where you guys come from.
Happy Valentine's Day to all, and a great welcome to the members of our Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, our administrators, faculty, community members, students, and their special guests, their families. It is a joy to stand before you and introduce our talented principals as they take the podium and share detailed information and anecdotes about the students being honored here this evening. Tonight, we acknowledge and celebrate the hard work of our students as they are celebrated as Student of the Month for the month of January. Tonight, we will hear about effort and results. The students who will be celebrated tonight were driven to succeed, and their efforts have been paid off. We are very proud of each of you and can't wait to hear about your academic journey and your subsequent successes. As is our process, we will begin with the Joseph F. Brand School and its proud principal, Principal Bartlett. He will then introduce the Honors Vice Principal, Mr. Hamlin, and Mr. Hamlin will then follow this same pattern, introducing our next presenters, Principal Shannon Sorfin and Principal Pica Pietra of Wallace, Hoboken Middle, and Hoboken High School. Each will celebrate the school's selections, and then, of course, pause for a picture opportunity. After the Student of the Month recognition portion is completed, Dr. Baskinjer from Hoboken Middle School will join us to celebrate three of their students, our students, who submitted pieces and are being recognized this evening as the winners of the Elks Drug Awareness Contest. And with that, I would ask Principal Bartlett to come to the podium. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rodriguez Gomez, and good evening, everyone. At this time, I would like to ask Bubacar Diallo to come join me at the podium. Congratulations to Bubacar Diallo, our Joseph F. Brand School Student of the Month for January 2023. Bubacar was nominated by his third-grade teacher, Ms. Contogienas. Ms. Kay said, "Bubacar displays a great work ethic each and every day at Brand School. He is a student who wastes no time. Bubacar comes to class, begins working on his assignments, participates, and follows instructions. He is always prepared, attentive to the lesson, and works hard. The work that he does is always above and beyond what is asked to be done, and he always exceeds expectations. Because of his outstanding work habits as a student, he is learning to persevere through struggles and not give up. He has a great attitude and comes into the classroom each morning smiling. He never complains about what he can't do. Instead, he takes on daily challenges and works to overcome them." On top of being a great student, Bubacar is also a role model for his third-grade class. He is friendly, kind, and always smiling. His hard work, passion for learning, and desire to do well is a great combination for success. Bubacar has a genuine heart for others, and he is a great representation of what a Brand bear stands for. Ms. Kay said the following quote reminds her of Bubacar: "It's not about perfection, it's about effort. When you bring that effort every single day, that's where transformation happens." I agree that that quote is an exhumation of Bubacar's approach to school every day. When I visit his class, he is always putting forth tremendous effort and in turn uses the feedback from his teacher to grow, a true representation of learning. Bubacar consistently stays true to himself and is honest. He handles matters among his peers independently and in a positive way, both in the classroom and out in recess. He looks out for his peers and does his very best to help others in need. He makes choices daily that showcase his integrity. He sets an example for others without being asked. Bubacar enjoys playing basketball, soccer, and Taiwondo. He is a part of the Brand Basketball Grade Team this year. He stated that he feels very confident when he is playing sports, and he also enjoys sports because he enjoys being part of the team. When Bubacar grows up, he aspires to be a doctor. He wants to be a part of a team that helps create the cures for many diseases. He said, "Being a doctor and finding cures will help people live longer and have a better future for themselves and for their families. I don't want people to suffer from health issues, so I hope to be the doctor to make a change in their lives." When told he would receive this award, Bubacar said, "Being Student of the Month makes me proud of the work I've been doing to improve at school, and it motivates me to do even better. In the beginning of the school year, I was nervous and not sure what I was capable of doing. It seemed difficult to me because it was different. My teacher, Ms. Kay, was able to show me that you can do anything you set your mind to, and my parents also encouraged me every day to be a better person and try my hardest, no matter how difficult something may seem. If you work hard, you can accomplish many things." And we certainly have no doubts that you are on your way to accomplishing anything you set your mind to, Bubacar. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in a round of applause for Bubacar Diallo. At this time, I'd like to welcome to the podium Mr. Jack Hamlin, the Principal of Connor's Elementary School.
All right, our Connor's School Student of the Month for January 2023 is Oliver Conde. Oliver was nominated by his third-grade teacher, Ms. Janus. Upon nominating Oliver, Ms. Janus said, "Oliver is a role model to his peers, and he brightens Connor's school with his positive attitude and his kind spirit." Who knows that's right? When I first spoke to Oliver, he talked about how surprised he was to win. He is very old. But his friends and family were not surprised. And after speaking to several, the words "smart" and "kind" came up quite a bit. Oliver Cruz has dedicated his to his academics every day in school by working hard, staying focused, and persevering. Oliver goes above and beyond to show respect and kindness to little babies. His favorite subjects in school are math, music, and gym. He likes to play sports like soccer, hockey, and basketball. One day, he left for a golf and be a professional athlete. Oliver quoted, "I love Connor's School because the staff and the kids are nice." Recently, Oliver won his classroom's medal in Mr. Janus's homeroom, and then competed in the Connor's School white spelling. He works diligently throughout the day to master multiplication facts in order to prepare himself for the challenging work that lies ahead in third grade and beyond. He loves playing math games in the classroom to challenge his brain and his peers as well. Every day, Oliver breaks everyone's day with his positive attitude and his happy smile. Oliver demonstrates the Connor's values every time he steps into school. He's prepared and ready to learn. This allows him to serve as a fantastic role model for the other students in third grade. He's also a role model for our younger students by showing respect to everyone and always doing the right thing. When Principal Addy spoke to Oliver's mom, she said she was proud of how he handles everything, how Oliver always prioritizes the school and he's able to balance it with travel ice hockey, travel soccer, while also demonstrating responsibility at home, doing his chores, making a bed, putting away his clothes and toys. His room is always neat. His mom went on to say that he's a super-kind kid. He always includes other students in all of his activities, and he always tries to be nice and inclusive to all students. So whether in Hoboken or at school, Oliver's an example of responsibility and kindness. All of this makes Oliver the perfect choice for our Connor's Student Club. So everyone can join me, be giving Oliver a round of applause. And now, I'd like to introduce the Principal of Wallace Elementary School, Mr. Martin Chet.
Good evening, everyone. We are here tonight to celebrate Gianna Marie Rivera, our Law student of the month for January 2023. Gianna is a kindergarten student in Mrs. Cruz's class. Mrs. Cruz described Gianna as "always eager to learn." She is responsible, happily completes all of her work, and loves to participate in class. Whenever a friend needs help, Gianna is one of the first to jump in and help them. She is kind and respectful to both her friends and adults. Gianna is a great role model to her peers. Choosing our Student of the Month is a celebration of character, and Gianna is a great example of this. As Gianna's principal, I appreciate the positive energy she brings to our school and community, whether in class, at recess, or in the hallways. Gianna is a way, has a way of exuding positivity towards students and staff alike. Gianna is an inquisitive learner. She is an outgoing student. She is kind and considerate to every child she meets and goes above and beyond for everyone that needs help. Gianna is an amazing child that has a positive influence to her peers. I am proud she is one of our Student of the Month. Recently, during Wallace's kindergarten academic pep rally, Gianna won an extraordinary effort award. This award epitomizes what it means to be a Wildcat, and Gianna embodies this spirit with all that she does. Gianna always enjoys playing basketball with her big brother and listening to songs on Kidz Pop. She wants to be a ballerina when she grows up. Gianna, Mr. Gallagher, our kindergarten parochial professional, says, "If I had to describe Gianna in one word, it would be 'well-mannered.' She is always very respectful and kind to her peers and to her teachers. Gianna was so excited to learn that she was the district Student of the Month. She said, "I like being in all the school. I feel happy here. I think I earned Student of the Month because I have kindness, I play with my friends, and I share." Gianna couldn't be more correct. She is truly spectacular in every way. Keep up the hard work. We are so very proud of you. Let's hear it for Gianna, our law school student of the month.
At this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Sorfin, the Principal of Hoboken Middle School.
Evening, everyone. Please welcome to the podium Hoboken Middle School's Student of the Month for January, Nicholas Benway.
Nicholas is a seventh-grade student who was nominated by his teachers for his hard work and his willingness to help others. This month, Nick only excelled, not only excelled in his hand assignments across subject areas, but has helped other students become equally as successful. In ELA, Nick has led his group to victory in a mock trial for the novel, "The Outsiders." In math, Nick shows up every day, ready to his best. We recently took Lincoln Form B and Nick move from the bubble category to the meeting category. This is the highest Nick has ever scored on any math, Lincoln. His success is due to his work ethic and his ability to set goals and strive for success and to achieve them. He completes all his work, consistently participates in lessons, and is always willing to share his thinking during class discussions. Not only is Nick an exceptional student, he is also an exceptional role model. His classmates and friends admire him and respect him as a leader. In fact, if Nick asks one of his peers to get on task, they will listen. Nick uses his leadership and social capital to better the classroom community. The seventh-grade class would not be the same or as great without Nick. In social studies, after Nick finished his work for the day, he helped another student who had fallen behind, got fallen behind. Nick is a true leader in and outside the classroom. He has strong influence on other students, which he uses in positive ways. One of his classmates, Leila Rivera, says, "Nick helps me get my grades up and by helping me in class and with my homework after school." This month, Nick joined the academic team where he participates in national academic competitions across subject areas. Nick welcomes challenges and enjoys working together and with other members of the academic team. Nicholas also exemplifies what it means to be a student athlete. He tactics his tasks in the classroom as well as on the field. He plays football, basketball, and baseball, and this year received Most Valuable Player for the Junior Red Wings. Another junior red wing, Aljelis Reyes, says, "Nick really deserved the MVP because he carried the team to the championship this year." Nick says that his dream is to go to University of North Carolina and go on to play football in the NFL or in the, or basketball in the NBA. He says, "I don't want to just be an athlete. I want to be a student athlete." Nicholas, as the proud principal of Hoboken Middle School, I want to say thank you for always leading by example and bringing such positivity and title pride to our school community. Please join me in congratulating the Hoboken Middle School's Student of the Month, Nicholas Benway.
At this time, I'd like to welcome to the podium the Principal of Hoboken High School, Ms. Robert P. Pietra.
Good evening, everyone. This time, I'd like to invite Isabella Seoji, our sophomore Student of the Month for January. I can spot her smile a mile away. Look at her. She is always smiling. What a beautiful smile she has. Whether in class, in the hallway, or at a school activity, she brightens up any room she's in. Isabella demonstrates a great maturity that is not always recognized as a sophomore. She always greets us in the morning with a bright hello. If you pass her in the hallway, she always greets you. She is quite impressive, challenging herself in pre-AP curriculum across disciplines. More impressive is her 3.90 GPA that she is carrying. Do you know how to maintain such great grades? Or it could be your perfect attendance. Isabella has not been late or absent to school this year. And I couldn't look up last year. Is your perfect attendance last year? Yeah. I couldn't look it up. I had a feeling she did. That demonstrates your thirst for knowledge and your desire to learn. Every teacher shared that Isabella is a kind and warm student, the type that every teacher wants in their classroom. She is focused, not afraid of challenges, and always asks questions. Her contributions to conversations are always spot on. She is approachable and always willing to work with others. She asks questions for clarification and is always pushing herself to do just a little bit more. I am impressed with her ability to work through frustration to figure things out. She often comments about the difficulty, but will go back to the passage and look again to arrive at her own connections, not just waiting for the answer to be given. Mr. Munoz is thrilled to have Isabella on student government this year because she is positive and driving force, and she has emerged as a student leader and a leader within the Class of 2025 Class Council. Her friends share, "She is unbelievably supportive and has a heart that is so kind. She just makes you feel good being around her." I often see Isabella spending time with her family and friends, and I cannot blame her, as her family is absolutely lovely. I look forward to seeing Isabella continue her journey over the next two years and look forward to sharing her accomplishments as she moves forward. Congratulations, Isabella. At this time, I'd like to welcome Dr. Baskinjer from Hoboken Middle School to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. In November, students of Hoboken Middle School entered the Hoboken Elks National Drug Awareness Contest, which invited students to create a reflective piece of writing on the theme of "One Pill Can Kill." Competing against hundreds of students across Hudson County, we are proud to say that Hoboken Middle School placed first, second, and third place amongst hundreds of students. A wonderful and incredible achievement indeed. In first place is sixth grader Adella Moore. Adella's essay was selected by the Elks Eastern District, which includes lodges from Lee Hawken, Ridgefield Park, Bayonne, Lufseide Park, Closter, Tattify, Palisades, and Fort Lee, as the winner to be entered in the New Jersey statewide contest. In second place, we have Crochet Chu, sixth grade. And in third place, we have Elise Pescual, who is also in grade six. The Hoboken Elks would like to present a certificate of achievement along with a monetary prize to each of these incredible winners that we are so proud of. At this time, please welcome first-place winner, Adella Moore, who will read her winning poem.
When pill can kill, when person can die, many people try, cannot get away. Save your life and stay awake. Could get trapped within a day. One pill can kill. One pill kills, it takes control. Want to stop, can't escape. You know you'll die, but it's too late. For one pill kills. Wrong dose kills. Doctor says it'll help you, yet you're still in pain. Try the higher dose, now you're in a grave. Wrong dose kills. Addictions kill. Don't try this one, soon you'll see. You would want more than three. Longer and longer, you want more and more, till the lights fade out, and you see. When one pill doesn't kill, two will. Sooner or later, you will die. Trust me, I don't lie. Pills addictive, addiction kills. Many pills kill. Don't give it a try unless you wish to die. Not fentanyl, morphine, or oxytocin. Don't get a drug, don't give yourself to companies. They want lots of money. Don't buy all those painkillers. You know they're addictive, don't get that thing, enjoy. Our actual realization are anything else. Some pills are good, others kill. Do your research, many pills kill. Many people laughed and laughed, said, "I don't know what I say, but they're the ones who are dead today. Save yourself, your family, your friends. Life is important, do you only get one. Don't waste on pills, many people die, many people love. Thank you."
Thank you, Adella. Adella won a monetary prize of $250. I'll welcome to the podium, Crochet Chu. He's awarded $150, one pair. And last year, Elise Pescual. And Elise also won a monetary prize of $150. Thank you very much. Congratulations to all of our students tonight. Very impressive group here. Now, we are going to move into the business portion of our meeting, so we will take just a two-minute break in case any families want to go have a late Valentine's Day dinner, eat some chocolate, do some homework. So we'll be back, and anybody who wants to.
Good evening, my name is Olivia Dunn, and I am here today representing the Student Council of Hoboken Middle School. There were so many exciting things that happened at Hoboken Middle School during the month of January. I would like to begin with congratulating our Student of the Month for December. In sixth grade, Nora Block; in seventh grade, Ella Gabrielle Army; and in eighth grade, Emily Lynn Gonzalez. You go the great work. The H M S Student Council ran a Valentine's Day candygram fundraiser for $1. Students, teachers, and staff were given the opportunity to send two lucky balls and a personalized message to anyone in the school. The Student Council sold over 200 candygrams, which were distributed earlier today. Thank you, everyone, for purchasing or donating. The proceeds will allow us to fund future events at H M S. allow us to fund future events at HMS. HMS held their annual classroom spelling race on Friday, January 20th during their Language Arts period. Classroom winners then competed the following week, Friday, January 27th, where a school winner was chosen. Our HMS winner will compete in the Hudson County spelling race. The Fine and Performing Arts Department at Hoboken Middle School in conjunction with Art in Art School Month proudly presents Tiger's Got Talent. This will be formatted as three separate assemblies per grade that showcase the talents of both students and faculty. It is a great way to build tiger pride in our school community. The month of March is historically one we celebrate and talk about the power of arts in our schools. The PTO continued to host their mentor fundraiser where anyone who used Blue Discount Code received 20% off all orders. And the PTO received 15% off all orders. They also began working on their second major wall at HMS. The Rock Climbing Club had the opportunity to practice older top rope and climbing with harnesses throughout the month. The students are encouraged to try more difficult walls each week. Our HMS Pickle Wall Club also worked on perfecting their game during the month of January. From developing their own version of a six-man game to practicing their serving skills. There was no shortage of excitement in the gym, so much so, even Mr. Short, he joined in on the action. Passport Printage finished up their linoleum block prints and began their first steps of screen printing unit. They discussed some of the history, context, and popular uses for this exciting art form before beginning to brainstorm and suggest some new ideas. Our Chef Adap Club had an amazing month full of number of different flavors and new experiences. From sweet and savory day to making their own zucchini pizza boats to chicken chili, there was never a dull moment for our many chefs. The academic team challenged their memory of 2022 by taking the year time special at the end of the year, 2022 quizzes for students. Students competed in groups, answering 45 multiple choice questions about events and sports, government, music, international affairs, scientific discoveries, and more. This quiz helped them prepare for the next national current events league, which took place in early February. They also competed in their third Continental Mathematics League. This league was part of the Edisile Division and featured six multiple step mathematics problems. Students worked to solve all six problems in under 30 minutes. Their scores have been entered and will count toward their curricular score for the school year, Go Tigers. GSA Club members engaged in a quick yoga meditation practice and reflected on their definition of self-care. Each member created a self-care plan focusing on ways to care for their mind, body, and spirit. They also wrote a short story from the story collection, Mrs. Araymo, and discussed the harmfulness of gossip and rumors. The Chorus Club was excited to announce that they will be participating in American Young Voices on June 7th at the credential center. They will be joining with courses all over the tri-state area and create a full stadium choir. In order to begin practicing for this, the club had karaoke days, which allowed them to practice singing an array of music styles and genres. The HMS band explored some potential repertoire for this spring concert. They also leveled up the music reading difficulty by starting new advanced models and also began working on their first concert in the festival song, Mission Impossible. We can't wait to hear all the great sounds the band is going to make. The Artist's Corner took some time at the beginning of the month to reflect on goals they have achieved together so far and began creating a list of goals they plan achieving this coming year. The students began to come up with creative ideas for displaying student artwork throughout the halls of Hoboken Middle School. They also discussed the possibility for a future expedition for student artwork. We look forward to seeing what the Arts Corner comes up with. The Hoboken Middle School Theater Department put on their Valentine's Day productive called "I Hate Valentine's Day," which is an awesome showcase of our students' talents. Robo, all the actors, Mr. Benson. Our junior thespians began experimenting with panty on. Some students also attempted to memorize the announcer's test. Additionally, a few of our seventh and eighth grade junior thespians attended a competition at Malcolte State University for the Speech and Theater Association of New Jersey. Our middle schoolers competed against high schoolers across the state and were excellent representatives of Hoboken's amazing theater program. Finally, during the week of January 23rd, the Hoboken Public Schools participated in the Great Kindness Challenge, our best buddies in Rachel's challenge. The brothers worked together to help promote and respect among our school community. Social shout out to Ms. Wilco, for having this challenge and making it such a success. Thank you for giving me this time and allowing us to bring all of this enormous excitement to you, and we look forward to speaking with you all next month.
Thank you so much, Olivia. It's so great to hear all that's happening at Hoboken Middle School, and we appreciate you coming to see us each month. And I promise I won't forget you next month. We don't have a high school representative here tonight, but we will see her next month. All right, so at this time, we'll take just two minutes for anybody who wants to leave, and then we will resume the business portion of our meeting. Our meeting now. And first, we are going to start with committee reports. Ms. Good, do you have a business administrator to report to me?
Very quickly, the audit due date goes towards March by the state of New Jersey. In the throes of budget season, we presented a draft budget to the Finance Committee in March and then to the full board after financial disclosure statements. I'm asking everybody, please log on to the Department of Mathics website, and please complete your financial disclosure statements as soon as possible. The due date is April 2023. However, I would respectfully request that you log on as soon as possible so we can get that information reviewed and approved by the state of New Jersey. On the board agenda, there are two additional items that were not on the board agenda, that were not on the finance agenda. We have an additional tuition for an out-of-district student, and we've also approved an Johnson Controls annual contract. That's my report.
Thank you. You're welcome. Next, we'll move to curriculum. Ms. McGurk.
Good evening. The Curriculum Committee met in a hybrid format on Friday, February 10th at 10:00 a.m. In attendance were Ms. Katamatorre, Mr. Delatorre, Mr. Branya, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, Assistant Superintendent Ms. Rodriguez Gomez, and myself. There are two items on the February agenda for board approval, and we recommend that both are approved. 8.01 is approval of grade level field trips, and we thank the HPEF for sponsoring many of these engaging learning experiences for our students. And 8.02, which is the submission of the Impact Aid grant. There were some other items discussed that are not on the agenda, and I'd like to take a couple of minutes to tell you all about them. First, the steam tank regional competitions are coming up. We have 10 teams going from Connor's Elementary, 20 teams from Grant Elementary, five teams from Wallace Elementary, and 30 teams from the middle school. To help the presentation skills, the head of Fine and Performing Arts, Danielle Miller, will be meeting with each team for a coaching session. So thank you to Ms. Miller for being able to help our students excel as they move on in steam tank. The family games and convention took place just a couple of Sundays ago. This was for ELA, so we had one in December for math and one at the beginning of February for ELA. And it was held on 2/5 here at the high school, and it was a really fun and engaging opportunity for families to get to play a variety of learning games together. And this type of home and classroom connection is something that we're really looking forward to seeing impact our students' achievement. And there's a science family games and convention that will be planned for late March. COCAP testing will take place in the month of March. The testing will be for all students in grades one to seven unless they choose to opt out. There's also a very exciting partnership with Big Media, which will have documentary screenings and learning sessions at both Hoboken Middle School and HHS, and they dovetail very nicely with Black History Month. First, on the 23rd of February, there will be pre-work for Frederick Douglass documentary, and on February 24th, there'll be a viewing of the documentary. And then in March, which is also Women's History Month, so it works out pretty nicely, there will be pre-work on March 23rd on a documentary on Harriet Tubman, and on March 24th, the documentary will be viewed at both the high school and the middle school. Our Black History Month celebration is coming up on February 28th at Hoboken High School at 6:00 p.m. It will be a wonderful celebration of Black history with presentations by our students, parents, and the greater Hoboken community, and dinner will be served. And one last update, kindergarten transition surveys, which is where surveys go out to all of the families and students at pre-K 4, and they indicate whether they'll be joining us for kindergarten last year, were all returned. And in the survey, in addition to asking if students would be staying on in the district or moving elsewhere, the administration asked if families would be interested in dual language education for kindergarten. Dr. Johnson and the administrative team are considering the implementation of a dual-language Spanish immersion program, starting at kindergarten in each of our elementary schools. And they are in the final stages of studying the feasibility of this for a possible September implementation. It would not be all classrooms, it would be a number of classrooms in each elementary school. The survey did not specify which language, but a bulk of families were interested. Eighty-two percent of those families surveyed plan on returning to the district, which is approximately 368 students. Ten percent will be leaving, and about eight percent are unsure this time. Of the ones who are planning to return, 79% indicated an interest in dual language program, and 76% of those unsure were interested. We look forward to reporting more details on this as the program develops. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to finance. Mr. Fofo.
Thank you. The Finance Committee did meet on Friday, February 10th. In addition to meeting, we were joined by Ms. Angley, Mr. Delatorre, Ms. Good, Dr. Johnson, Ms. Lopez, and Ms. Norwood. We reviewed the finance agenda and recommend all four for approval. There are two new additions, but Ms. Good just talked about, and this is Johnson Control for the annual contract inspection of all the fire safety facilities and equipment in the schools. And the other is for the out-of-district tuition contract. We're also grateful. We have one interesting donation of $2,500 from an organization, a national organization called Mission 500, which works with companies in the security industry to promote excellence in social responsibility. It seems to be the focus on food insecurity, and that $2,500 is going to the district lunch appropriate to families who are facing situations of food insecurity. Can we go right to the facilities? Since I'm doing that report, Ms. Conna can be here tonight, and she asked me to give the report. That committee met yesterday, included Ms. Katamatorre, Ms. Norwood, Dr. Johnson, Ms. Conna, and Mr. Callagay. We, of course, spent a fair amount of time discussing the situation at the members' plan of repairs, but I think Dr. Johnson here going to pop up at that, but Ms. Angley will talk a little bit about that. And there are only two other agenda items that we briefly reviewed, two facilities requests and fire safety drill reports for January, and these are recommended for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. And governance. Mr. Kirian.
Hi, good evening. The Governance and Personnel Committee met on Wednesday, February 8th. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Katamatorre, Ms. McGurk, Ms. Conna, and myself. The committee discussed all agenda items and would recommend all for approval. As is typical throughout the school year, you will see a number of agenda items for appointments, terminations, resignations, teachers, and other personnel. This includes nurses, professionals, security guards, teachers, substitutes, co-curricular advisors, coaches, passport to learning advisors, events, and district musical staff. A few of particular note, I'd like to point out in Agenda Item 9, Act 02, the retirement of Micaela Guzman Mika. We just missed her, I think she was here just a minute ago. So I want to thank her for her 25-year service to the students of the Hoboken Public Schools. Mika has served as security guard at the high school, at Wallace, at Grant, and she is well-known, well-recognized, and well-loved across the district and our greater Hoboken community. We wish her lots of happiness, good health, and her retirement. If you see her, reach her well. She'll be with us through the end of the school year. And then also, 9.16, it's approval of staff for the Oregon Gillingham Professional Development and Comprehensive Training. We are excited to have been able to offer Oregon Gillingham training to so many of our elementary school teachers, making a difference in literacy for our students. As usual, there are agenda items for the approval of assembly workshops, and I want to point out in particular the impactful visit of Mr. Kizito Kalima, who will speak to the Holocaust and genocide classes at the high school about his experiences as a survivor of the Rwandan genocide. What a really special event to have him speaking to our students and educating them about the horrors of genocide from his unfortunate firsthand perspective. Additionally, there are a number of policies on the agenda this evening. There are first and second readings of several policies. And so, just you'll see those there. Board members, you were provided redline versions of all of those that are on first reading, and of course, those that are on second, you have a chance to look at for some time now. And again, we recommend all of those for approval. And that is my report for tonight.
Okay, thank you. And wellness, Mr. Delatorre.
The Wellness Committee met on Friday, if you were attending. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Katamatorre, Ms. Conna, Ms. Branya, and I. The committee discussed all agenda items, and we recommend all for approval. Please note that Item 7.01 is a second reading, which includes revisions and new policies provided by Strauss as May, a redline version, which was provided to all board members for comments. That's it.
Thank you. Okay. Tonight's meeting reflects the board's new committee structure and chairs. Thank you to each board member who has stepped up to chair our committee this year. I would also like to thank Aileen McGurk, who has stepped up to take on a new board position. Aileen will serve as the board's community liaison and will help keep up with what's going on in the community that affects the district and will work with the administration on any events the district and the board may host for the community. I'm grateful that Aileen will take on this role. So thank you, Ms. McGurk. Next, I'll touch upon the Demarest School Building. As many of you have seen, there's some fencing and scaffolding set up at the school and work being done on the exterior of Hoboken Middle School. On Saturday morning, a decorative vinyl fell off the building and fell to the ground. No one was there, and no one was hurt. The fire department and police taped off the area until the fencing arrived on Monday morning. Out of an abundance of caution, the remaining vinyls are being removed from the exterior, and that work will be completed by the community. Our administrative team is working with the Hoboken Historical Preservation Commission while this work is being done. And next, last month, I responded to some questions that came up at a previous board meeting, including one on facilities planning, and I think this will be an ongoing question, so I'd like to address it again tonight. The board has been very open in saying that we have learned a great deal from last year's January 2022 referendum. We have subsequently held many community roundtables to engage the public, inform them on topics such as budget, current facilities, programs, et cetera. And the feedback on those sessions from the community was very positive. The board is committed that we will not make any decisions about a new plan until the public is engaged and their input is taken. The district's enrollment growth is real. Space remains an issue, and we have buildings such as Demarest that are over 100 years old. While there is no plan for a new school to be put up for referendum at this time, the district is continuously addressing space constraints and managing our current facilities to make them the best learning environments that they can be for our students at this time. Just this year, the district moved four pre-K classrooms to the Jubilee Center to free up space in our elementary schools for K-5 students. As far as the teacher plan, again, we all learned a lot. As far as a future plan, again, we all learned a lot. Last January was a very different economic time, and as a board, we saw it as an optimal time to act with interest rates as low as they were. Going forward, the district will take steps it didn't necessarily pursue last time around, and will be exploring and advocating for funding to assist the community in financing a new educational space. It will be no secret when we are ready to move forward with a potential new plan, whatever that may look like. And that is my report for tonight. So now we will go on to public comments on agenda items. Okay. Moving on to agenda items.
Ms. Cavatori?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Mr. Brana?
Yes.
Mr. Pupple?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
No, on nine point two, period, yes, I'm first.
Mr. Kirian?
Yes.
Ms. Engle?
Yes.
Motion to access.
Okay, so now we'll move on to public comments on both agenda and non-agenda items. As you're walking down, I'll read my statements that I typically make. So just a reminder, before we open public comments, over the years, the most recently, the board has been asked why it does not prohibit or stop comments about school district employees from individuals who speak during the public comment portion of the meeting. The short answer is that the law prevents the board from censoring comments made about district personnel. The board does not condone, nor is the board party to comments as such. However, just because a speaker may have the right to say what he or she feels, it does not absolve a speaker from liability for any defamatory comments that an employee may bring against a speaker. Should speakers say something that subjects them to a civil suit, the responsibility falls squarely on the speaker and not on the board. I also want to remind speakers of board policy. Please state your name, municipality of residence, and business affiliation, if any. Speakers are allowed five minutes, and Ms. Cavatori, we motion with thirty seconds left. With that being said, it's all yours.
Madam Aldebarra, I turn on Park Avenue. Good evening, board, members of the public. I, as I was seated, I was listening as you were speaking, and some of you ticked off some of the things that I was going to mention, but I will mention them again. In regards to the building, the school building, Demarest, the concern would be with the decorative parts that are being removed, will that change the historic nature of the building, or will they ever be replaced? I'm sure that in future, you will let the public know, it'll be on your website or here at some point, or even the historical, pardon, historical preservation commission. I don't know why that came out as hysterical, but it was hysterical. Next, I would like to speak on regards to, again, another thing that has spoken about Mission Five Hundred, because I did see a television piece from a news article that was stating that our state is very, having very difficulties with children affording their lunches. So having heard that there is a grant coming in or donation is very helpful. I hope that students and parents and guardians are offered the opportunity as soon as possible to apply for these things, because some of the qualifications to get on these programs sometimes becomes very technical, and maybe for a mere five dollars or ten dollars or fifty dollars on their paycheck, they don't qualify for their children to be in the committee. So if we could help streamline that donation, then hopefully work on these other qualifications, that would be very helpful for the parents and guardians of the school district. Another thing, and I still have time, I would like to also speak in regards to, again, another little, I would say, news portion that I saw, it really affected me a couple of days ago, about a young lady who was bullied in her school. She was actually more than bullied, she was assaulted, and in that school district or that school, they just let her be as kids fighting, and I believe that the outcome of that was very tragic, because the young person, a line that I'm taking here, how do I say this, a child in the room, you understand what I'm saying? So I, once again, as I always come up here, I continue to ask and plead that the school district, the, you know, board members, and anybody that could help put more light on this and even go further. The answers, no one has all the answers, but at least an outreach program, some kind of a student learning system that other students could help that student go to a teacher or guidance counselor, something needs to be done, because we cannot lose any of our precious children in our state, in our country. So it's very important that we do that, that we try to work on this situation, because this is very heartbreaking, and the reason I came up, I wasn't, but the reason I came up was because this was with me, and to see the story completely following, go find it on CBS News, and it would break your heart, you know, because it's a beautiful young person, just bullied for no reason, just because she was different. And we also have to extend the LGBTQ community so they could also feel equally comfortable in all our schools and our settings, because that's very difficult for a person to go through by themselves, and it's also difficult to open up when they're so young. So that I would appreciate you do, and again, the bullying that are asked, you know, we need to put some type of emphasis on trying to find what would be the best approach, because there are some places that are doing stuff, so we need to, in our district, try to do the best, even though I believe that our district is good, but I, I'm speaking from personal space, because I do have a family member that gets bullied, so we do need to find ways, you know, changing school is not just the answer all the time, and I appreciate your time. Thank you, your attention and your time, good evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
May I ask one question? Is the gentleman in the tie the lawyer for the board? Thank you, sir.
Okay. Excuse me. I'm sorry, I was going to speak. I want to be recognized, because the man just said, "Put it down with your tongue," so I was going to say, "I'm a lawyer," and then, "Do you know a lawyer," right?
That's right, yes.
Have you just sitting in for Mr. Law, the attorney?
That's right.
All right, do you have a thing like a business card or something on your name? I'm sort of addressing you, but he's...
Did you want to sign up to speak?
Corporation counsel. No, I wasn't going to speak, but when the man just started speaking, I asked him to ask who's the gentleman in the town, and he didn't get his name.
Okay.
So that's all I need.
My mistake, just, yes, on that.
And you're part of the law firm, so...
That's right.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. Okay, now we will be going into executive session for a brief time for the purpose of potential litigation. We will not be taking any action, so we will just be coming back to close the meeting, and we will be approximately thirty minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr., excuse me, Ms. Cavatori?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Mr. Brana?
Yes.
Mr. Pupple?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
Yes.
Mr. Kirian?
Yes.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Full session. Okay, it's now eight sixteen, and we are just coming back from executive session. Do I have a motion to resume the meeting?
Motion.
And with no further business, do I have a motion to close the meeting?
So motion.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, sorry, yes, roll call, please, to come back.
Ms. Cavatori?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Mr. Brana?
Yes.
Mr. Pupple?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
Yes.
Mr. Kirian?
Yes.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Second, eight seventy-two, second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Close abstentions, or we're closed.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.